The Office of the Grand County Board of Commissioners is ready to order for July 19, 2022. Members of the County Board of Commissioners are advised here by their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest, and the appearance of such conflict is part of our instruction to refrain from participating in any manner coming before this Board of County Commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or the appearance of such conflict. May I? May I just say that, please?
That's right. Good day, my Father. Just thank you for this voice today that you've given us. And Father, we're just so thankful for the opportunities, and Father, we're just thankful for the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. And Father, we just ask that you just be with us as concerns for the county, and Father, we just ask that we just lift up each and every one in the county that are sick and ill, and Father, we just ask that you just bless them and just protect them. And Father, again, we're just so thankful for everything that you do for us, and Father, we just ask that you just leave us, just give us the wisdom and the words that we need to do. And Father, we thank you again for everything you do. In your precious Father's name, you just cross me prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May there be changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
All right, thank you. How many can you wish to approve the agenda, gentlemen?
None.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Sure.
Thank you all in favor. Okay. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes of June 13th, 14th, 21st, and workshop at regular meeting minutes for June 21st? Okay. I want to take a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Minister approved. Okay. All right, so you're welcome.
Turn that mic around, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I have a couple little items that we need to address that are above all of our spending limits. I'll start, I'll start low and work my way up. How's that sound? I want to, thank you. Thank you, too shocking. We are looking at doing some preventive maintenance contracts on our medical equipment. In the past, we have probably maintenance things when they broke, which is probably not the best way to do it, especially on some of the more delicate items like cardiac monitors, because we want them to be as efficient and as right as they can be. I have a preventive maintenance contract from Zoll Medical, which will cover all six of our cardiac monitors, will cover the preventive maintenance to make sure they're calibrated correctly, and will provide service loaners if we need them, and a substantial discount on batteries and expendable equipment. And for the course of the, we've had, a contract with Zoll before, but we've only had three monitors, and we've got six now, and in the past, it is basically double, so we have to come forward with the, the total cost for that is $8,316, and that covers the entire 12-month period for the preventive maintenance and an extended warranty for each of the six cardiac monitors. Want to do it all at one time, or do I need to break them up into separate items?
What is your recommendation on that?
It's just a-
I'd do it each because the next one's going to have a little compensation.
Okay.
And the money is budgeted, we did provide for it in the budget.
All right. We have a motion to approve on the floor. Do I hear a second? So, all in favor?
The next item is a PM, or preventive maintenance contract, on all of our Stryker branded equipment, which includes all of our stretchers, all of our stair chairs, which are patient movement devices, all of our CPR, our Lucas CPR devices. This contract includes new software updates, preventive maintenance, it includes batteries for each of the power cuts, and just a battery alone is in the neighborhood of $1,100, and generally, it provides for two per year, so five power cuts at two per year, it almost pays for the, you know, almost pays for the maintenance. But it also does software upgrades, expendable parts and everything for the CPR devices, and it services and does preventive maintenance on the power load system, which is the automatic loads for the, and it's a, it's a twofold thing. It's a crew safety, because if it functions correctly, we have potential for less injury, and also, you're suspending a patient in the air at about four feet, and we will make sure that that works correctly, because I feel that it would probably be pretty expensive if it doesn't. One claim will be way more than what the service contract would be. For all of those items, it's, it includes parts, labor, travel for maintenance and everything, and for a one-year inspection service, and we have the option to call them back at any time if we have problems, at no cost. And it's $11,382. We have looked into maintaining them ourselves, but Stryker and Zoll both say you have to be factor certified. So it's really not an option to get anybody factor certified.
I think on the legal side of that, with your move of patients, while we better have them to kind of certify people, I like the motion to do that also.
You have a motion of the board to approve the $11,382 for this maintenance contract? Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Thank you.
Now for people. I provided Ms. Kim with some information through your packet. I've included the latest bid information for new ambulances. We provided you for that in the budget and the capital outlay. Due to circumstances beyond our control, we were unable to purchase an ambulance last year. As you know, we have been purchasing one each year to keep the maintenance costs down and to keep the reliability up. We were unable to do that last year for various reasons. So I'm trying to play catch-up with this year. I have budgeted for two ambulances this year, and that will get us back in the correct rotation. The problem we're running into is we're looking at an 18- to 36-month delivery time. They have no idea how much ambulances are going to cost in three years or two years, whenever we would be able to get them. Feel like it's a good idea to get them locked in on the contract price now before it goes up anymore. I've got the bid package prepared, I've got the advertisement there, I just need, and the money's been approved and in the budget already. I just need the notice of approval to go ahead and solicit for bids. Looking at opening the bids at the next regular meeting. That gives them 30 days to get bids in. I feel like it's an ample amount of time. If they want to bid, they should be able to get a quote together within a month.
Are there questions or discussion about ambulance bids and purchase? And we talked quite a bit about this during our meeting, so I don't have any questions. Do you have some more?
I just have nothing. Not my question.
Thank you. Commissioner Eller, is there a second?
Second.
Please, Commissioner, we can all in favor?
Right now, we're in good shape fleet-wise, but in two years, when we get the new ones, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
Exactly.
What kind of shape we're going to be in in two years.
And we know that they're square and fair.
There is.
In two years of it, it's pretty heavy stuff.
They're not going to be remounting so-
They're not, but we, we're not in a position to remount anything. The ones that we have now have been, that are available to remount have been remounted too many times. But this will allow us to have three, three, I'm sorry, four trucks that will be able to go through the remount process next time.
Thanks.
It's a long wait, son. It's a-
Really good. I appreciate that, like the proactive approach. That's, if you want to do it, it's more than I helped, I don't know.
Some of the vendors I've talked to hope that they will, but they don't have any way of knowing. Some of the main factories are already closed, or pointing something to the order for taxes.
The thing that I saw was it was a shovel. I see them.
It's kind of a story, isn't it?
Well, I'm the guy who always told him, I'm sure he won't give us much stuff.
My dear, there is. Let me go.
We have some history there.
Four words, you will two fragile.
We really got a little pick on that. I might get tired here. I'm having a hard time with you both. I admire that checking the fuel bill, that parking and move on. The fuel lines are very old, it's mates of cheap. Did I change it? My rubber crank that was involved, you are returning. Well, that we didn't mount, they kept some down over weekend, or they were set on, but I'm, because I'm there.
Which one? Which one is the portion?
Is it one of the new four? Well, it's the first four we got.
First?
Yeah, we got two of the new four. Now, look, that is a bit of that, and forward to the change date for your place. Glad to know.
Okay. I'm ready to run it forward.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. I, there's a lot to cover here. There's been a lot happening since the last meeting, and a lot, believe it or not, happened just today, within the last two days. So bear with me as I get through some of this. Some information's going to get really fresh, and some, obviously, really good. We'll start with the first item. This actually just came out, the schedule for our August 2nd, 3rd objection review is going to happen, and I've provided all of the documentation that was provided to me, the objection invite letter, it has the schedule. From my, again, I just got this, so from what I looked at it, we're scheduled for the first two days. I didn't see Grand County included on the third day. There are several different subjects. It looks like they probed them up from 08:30 to 1700 or 5 o'clock each day. So it'll be very busy days that we'll be able to do that. We are meeting, as I say in my notes, here Thursday with Commissioner Wiggins and Hayden and Forrest, who's been helping us with getting this prepared. We'll be putting our plan together on Thursday. So a couple of questions that I would ask the board and Commissioner Wiggins, how he wanted to approach this. Do we want to meet, Hayden will be on the call on Thursday, Forrest will be a person, we can do that from my office. Do we want to look at, and we can discuss this Thursday, do we want to look at setting that August 2nd, 3rd in here in the meeting room, or maybe go to transit conference room? Something to think about between now and Thursday, we want to throw that out to kind of be prepared. We could even do it at the 911 training or conference room, 911 training as a smaller conference room.
It's going to be at home, man, every corner.
Yeah, you can do it by the door. Anyway, I was looking for-
If we were only person, it would be different, I guess. But, well, if Forrest is going to be with us, there was two days, we, I mean, we can figure that out. I'm giving it away.
Okay.
What time are you meeting on Thursday?
Thursday, we're scheduled at 10:00 a.m. to be in my office to start the planning. So please, anybody that's welcome to come. And then, again, I provided all the documentation, those, the objections will start on the 2nd at 08:30 with the introductions, and we are on schedule, not scheduled for the 2nd and 3rd, at different times each day. So it'll be, count on a pretty long day for today, is more likely.
It's insane.
Yeah.
It's just a crazy way to do anything, if that's how they do it.
That is. No questions on that. I'll move on to the CDBG, got quite a bit of information to provide. This was, this has been challenging, to say the least, for a number of reasons. We'll go over some of those. Finally getting through some of these procurements, we're able to, to start seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. So I'll start with the CDBG, the Neighborhood Revitalization. It's been in procurement. We're currently waiting right now on us, I've got to get with Commissioner Wiggins hopefully tonight. I sent an email out, waiting on the Grand County Committee to review the RFPs for the survey and engineering services. Also working on procuring hazard materials abatement as being, it is a challenge due to lack of interest. I gave those packets, Commissioner Wiggins, just so you know, to Jacob, let him look at those prior to leaving. So if we can decide on the day this week, like I sent an email from invite, he's willing to get on the phone with us while he's on vacation, and we can score those and then make it a recommendation to award to Ms. Becky and the CDBG who are contracting. So we do have some, some good stuff going on there with the Neighborhood Revitalization. With regards to the CDBG coronavirus funds, the schools, under the schools, the program, procurements complete on the school portion of the project, all computers and hotspots are purchased and paid for out of funds. The remainder of the school portion is a $3,000 per month fee on the hotspots for 12 months to be paid entirely from the CDBG fund. Under the Imagination Hub, Internet Service and Resources for Persons Looking for Work administered by the United Methodist Church. All procurement is complete and payment issued to vendors. CDBG funds to reimburse county will be paid on Friday via EFT. Our senior center, we advertise the bids on equipment and working and RFP to advertise changes in the senior center, kitchen to upgrade freezers and provide more storage. Grace Place has been trying to procure contractors for their expansion and has had the advertised, has to advertise twice due to federal procurement constraints, and third round of bids is underway. EMS training, Grand Administrator had a meeting with EMS staff, in the process of procurement and equipment needed to enhance training of the new EMS staff. Procurement has been tough, but this project is moving along as well as can be expected in the environment we currently are working. As you know, from the last couple meetings, when Michelle was in here, she said herself, some of the stuff you can't get people to reply. We'll reply an email, and we'll show up for a bid package. So it's been challenging, to say the least, but we are, we are trying, we're scratching, digging, killing at people, we're moving forward, so. Any questions on CDBG right now? All right. The Admin Health, as you know, we provided a support letter to them, they were very appreciative. What they scheduled, and I've provided, it's along with that package of information, should be your next document. It shows the advertisement for serving the community room. They're going to hold a public comment listening session here in the community room on Monday, July 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This will discuss that, there is a CON application to provide a 67 bed at Key Hospital in the Canley area of Buckland County. I talked to, this sort of leads into my, my last one, I think it's the next point on the next page, after, after the work quality, I'll cover a little bit more then, but in my quest to arrange a meeting with Senator Orman and the board and Representative Gillespie, he had come to me and said, suggested that 25th, since he was going to be here. Unfortunately, we'll also get down into the agenda, and you'll see that some folks, including myself, were already scheduled to go to Southwestern Commission on that day, and I told Representative Gillespie that, that we schedule another day. Senator Orman is scheduled to be at the Blanche and Silva, and Representative Gillespie's scheduled to be here, so we're splitting those times up. What I, I say this again in the report going forward, I'll work to continue to get us a separate day, so. And we'll cover that a little bit more, the dinner, a little bit more in the agenda as we go forward. Moving on to this one, something, this is kind of an add-on from the last month. The board approved for Phase 1 to go forward, I think at 28, it was $20,000, $21,800 to put in that first. We have a fair monitor our own landfill, I told. What I went back and did, if you remember, these quotes I got in February of this year, we didn't get approved permits from the government until May for our permits and our work plan until June. What I did was I had him go back and I said, "Recalculate to see if there's going to be any changes in your prices because of everything else that's going crazy in the world, inflation." So it's a, it's a good thing in a couple ways. If you read what I've provided, and also provided in that document, Jay Zimmerman with NESCO's breakdown of how this would benefit the county, go ahead and approve the money now. We basically are going to save mobilization fees if we wait and do the two wells at a later time. We talked about it last night, last time, and the commissioners seemed to be on board with doing all at one time. We just approved that first amount of money. So I provided a breakdown of this, if we go ahead and do it, this, this go around as soon as possible. Phase 1, there was an adjusted cost of $4,700, it took it up to 26,500. That covers all the initial, you know, problems with inflation, material costs and fuel costs. But if we go ahead and do the other two wells while they're here, we save on surveying, expeditional survey, reporting, and mobilization costs. We could save upwards of $15,500. Now we put us at, if we went ahead and did all three wells, and they come out at one time, we could, with a 15% contingency, about $61,800 would cover them. If we do one well and then wait, it could be upwards of $77,300 next year for those additional costs. So we save about 30% savings and go ahead and do them now, and it was worth asking the question to see what that cost ratio would be, go ahead and have all three monitoring wells installed now, we save about $15,000. So I'd ask the board if there's any questions, and then if they would consider going ahead and approving all those.
Thanks for the information. I would ask Becky, are we okay with that?
But what we'll have to do is, yeah, we, we, I can hold off on that until we get more, you know, all the information, so we've got the money and help, but we're, I just need to do a budget and command based on what you, the board decides.
Okay. All right. We hear from the board. What are your thoughts, May?
Nurses like Jason says, we're building them, and next year's won't be real. We, you know, it's just 100% saying we're doing that.
Okay.
Are we then, like, to put these other wells in also?
Yes.
Yeah. Does this wrap the whole bracket up?
It will wrap that requirement up, from my understanding.
Forever? Never further?
I'd hate to say forever, but it takes care of this requirement that they put through in making revenue for this monitor, that's why.
That was what the reason was, that, you know, regarding the, the uncertain concessions. It's back to the change.
Well, can you add a please, thank you? I don't have procedures changed, too. Dan, what are your thoughts?
I agree with everybody else, we could bring it down.
Do you have, like, any written documents from the people that we're dealing with here that says this is physical fields, you're required?
What I can do is I can go back to the lady I'm talking to from the state and make sure, verify them. If you want to do, approve it pending that documentation, we can do that.
I'd be glad to see that at least, and writing myself.
I'm like, I don't call it, I'm thinking, I don't call it, some of them, yeah.
Second, please.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the three wells at $61,800, pending a letter that, from the state, that this satisfies Grand County's requirements on this landfill? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Move on to, as I mentioned earlier, I'm still working with our representatives on the meeting with the school and the board. As soon as I can lock that down, I will pass that on, and we'll start checking in what takes, well, if it's not a regular meeting, we'll continue to try shoot for something this month. Then, lastly, I'd like to just make the board aware, if you weren't, we talked to Ms. Angie at the school, and they've been having a function for the kids. It's a Tuesday, school summer nights event, and Ms. Beth Booth of the Department of Public Health, our health director, she had volunteered to do half of one night, and I volunteered for us as the county to do the other half. We did, we took care of the food and the refreshments, and I think it's a great thing for what's happening for the children, a great place for them to be, very well organized, I thought, with the games, the health department took care of the games, they had a cornhole tournament, they had volleyball net up, they did some outdoor activities, then they had a fire pit and smores that they cooked later tonight. We provided pizzas, some snacks, dessert, drinks, water, and so I thought it was a very good opportunity and a good way to help, give back to the youth, and very good turnout. And I just want to express my thanks to Beth and the folks from the health department, and especially this Hope Anderson, who helped with the food and helped get things over there and get it done, taken care of. So just a really good opportunity for us here to.
Personally, have any students or kids, would you say?
We figured there were probably around 60-ish. They had told us there was roughly around, usually around 70, 75, so we're just a hair under their average, but it was still a good thing for those kids to have somewhere to go. There's not a lot here to do, so really good, over at the track, good opportunity, and thought it was very well done.
Have any plans to do the briefing?
Well, I think they're going to do, I think there's a couple more Tuesdays, the church itself through the, through the year, and I think there's a couple more Tuesdays, or already look for those ones, but I'd certainly be willing to help out again, you know, maybe make it an annual thing if they're going to continue to do that. So I'll make sure Angie, I did tell Kevin White that, I'll make sure Angie is aware of that as well.
There's no way for the others, yes?
Absolutely.
Our church is doing this, this community, yeah. Or they still, whatever they do, they do it.
All right. If there are no other questions with regards to that, or the manager's report, I'll move on to the project. Give you a couple of documents that are there, provided. Start with the moose branch, there's really no change in the moose branch, other than the surveying of the lots was completed, and this is some good information, I'll bring that to the RDA where I got the plat. It's really going to be great, we can, that really helps us move forward with that. So surveying's done, still waiting to hear from the guard rail. Contractor couldn't give me a date because they've not been able to get a date from their supplier. It's not, it's not the actual installer, it's the supplier that we're here. So they're still having a hard time getting a solid by a date.
What do you think of McGill?
Their, the only thing I heard from McGill was they're pushing back on, on the contractor, and I'm waiting on a phone call from McGill to tell me what their intent is. And I'm waiting on a phone call from McGill to tell me what their intent is. So I'm hoping to have that for the RDA Board by and before then and see what I can find out, what, what our options are from a Board's perspective. The next thing is cemetery department building and recreation department building. I'll talk about both of them. Then I've provided some numbers that we'll talk about finishing the cemetery building first. I've had the last, over the last week or so, a couple of weeks, we've been installing all the underground utilities, water connection, sanitary connection, and the underground power service. And with that, all of it stuck in. Obviously, the power was just a conduit. I felt like conduit instead of, you can do it in a reactive area. But I felt like a conduit to our buildings gives us an option. Later down the road, by some stretch of the imagination, you want to put Keith, a big expensive welder or lift in one of those buildings and we can pull in thicker wire. We have conifers if we want to. So we, we've got conduit. All the water lines and sewer lines are in. The, they started covering up and shaping up the site up at the red building. So that site, we're going to have it seeded. And that site will be pretty much set, other than there'll be some sidewalk work we'll want to do around the front. Make sure we got ADA compliance to get into the building. And then the only thing at the cemetery building with the shaping of the site, it's still open because we moved the tractor to get over to the other site to get the power in at the same time. We moved the back row over there. And it just needs to be covered up and shaped up a little up there. So, so we'll move, definitely move forward completing the site work. In the meantime, I've got some numbers here that I want to provide for the cemetery building. As you know, we've got, as far as we've got, which includes where we, we are with the building and the utilities and the site work, we've got in the building expenditures to date, it's about $8,110. And I did reconcile this with finance. Her number's a little bit better than mine. That's why, that's why we hired her. What I did was I've gotten some prices for the finish. And I provided them there. Architectural finishes, it would include all your framing, sheet rock. Insulation, I think, is included in that. All your flooring, a little bit of flooring, we won't do much flooring. There'll be a little VCT in the main office. We'll do something, a little bit in the bathroom just to, to make sure that that's a wet lay patient area. Obviously, anything on the inside, trimming out windows, installing doors. We've got a price at about $56,786. The mechanical, EDP, mechanical security is around $21,000. Some of the concrete drive work, like the, as you enter, as you come up the hill, I'd like to concrete that from the asphalt pay. Because of pulling up, as you know, pulling off the road always causes ruts. You spin it out, I'd like to concrete that from the asphalt to the door with a little sidewalk in front of the doorway. And then just a skirt out the other end of the building. You don't necessarily have to go to the road for that. But that concrete works about $13,000. With the total estimated remaining at about $90,800, about $91,000 to, to get us complete, that puts us at about $171K for the, to finish that building and get it closed for CO. And I provided the numbers to the left. Also, our estimates to begin with was a low of $150 and a high of $200K. And our low bid was $275, $775. So I'd asked the commissioners of the Board if they would consider approving that. Total estimated cost remaining of $90,800 so we can move forward with completing that building.
Is there any discussion from the Board or questions to Manager Moreno? All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the $19,800 to complete the process. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you said, I believe the bid was $210.
That's correct. Low bid was $210. That, that was the basic stuff. So we're on track. We do, we have budgeted this, for this, this work, as well as the recreation building. But again, I want to make sure the Board has, I'm waiting on some numbers to finish that. I should have these numbers prior to our next meeting, so it may end up being a poll unless the Board doesn't want them. But I'd like to get it started. Let me get the numbers first and then Ms. Clerk, Chris and I will get together and we'll see how the Board wants to go forward with that.
Back to that, $275,000 bid, I believe that bid came in before the COVID and the sidewalk and everything connected to COVID and the economy today.
Yes.
So it's pretty impressive.
All right. So we'll move on to number four. And as you know, as, as you can see, we have begun the demolition of tile in, in the women's restroom. Got all of that off, every bit of the tiles off the floor and off the wall. They're put up. The intent is to take the surround, our porcelain tiles, what I'd rather go with, to the ceiling. So we've put all the hardbacker, tile backer, except the plumbing wall. I'm waiting on our plumber to come in and mark the area to either will cut out, to read, to move. We have to move one toilet outlet and re-plumb the sinks to a certain extent. Then we'll close everything back up and start telling everything. So we began, we've begun doing that. I'll start showing the percentage here pretty quick on that. And we're just glad we're moving forward with that. Obviously, we have our other new bathroom in use and they did a really good job on that. The new Justice Center, some quick points and milestones on that. Today was the last day for RFIs, per the RFQ that was submitted on June 27. We've so far, I've had, I've shown three firms that are interested in the facility. That's just the ones that have either reached out to me or asked a question. So I can't see on some of the sites that we've been, I can't see, it's not like a bidding site where you have a, they have to get mirrors and then you can have a bunch of mirrors listed, who the contractor is. This is make it available and then they can go to our website. They basically see what it is and then they can go to our county website. I could potentially maybe go to IT and see how many times they've, we've had somebody tag it. But right now, we've got Hiri or Slam, who did the initial program design, block and exacting for us. Co- associates, which is out of Knoxville. And I've talked to Scott Donald. He knows, he's familiar with the gentleman that did, that's over Co- associates. And they're certainly capable and it's a good firm. And then Mosley Architects, which I think is out of Charlotte, another capable firm that's done it. So I anticipate there's going to be more than those, but those are three that I know for sure that are initially saying they're going to provide a, a proposal with their qualifications to us.
Were they, um, they did so?
They did. They're not, their firm won't do the RFQ. They might potentially work with another firm to do some of the design work. Because of the jail, I talked to them and they're actually not PFA anymore. I changed their name. But the jail is, is more of a specialized, but these are, these are going to be a little more. So some milestones, obviously, today at 12 was the deadline for RFIs. And I posted those on our, on the Graham County website. You can see that as a link. As soon as I got a question in, I put it on the projects that I had and made it available to the ones that had already contacted me, plus made it available on the site. Got another one in. I just had the date and put it on the same document, so it was always available if they might have questions.
The design that showed up in the Graham story, that's not what it's going to look like?
Correct. It's not.
Okay.
Kind of like we watched that.
I had a column about that. It said, that looked like office, looking at it. And I said, I don't think that's what we're hearing about.
Your answer, the Chair Orman, well, she was noticing that from the front day one. And it was, it, it's not. And I've had to answer some of those questions too. And it's, it's a justified question. You see that. If you don't like it, you want to know. And I think it, obviously, it's going to be commissioners and maybe even the citizens that'll make the sure we'll get a couple of options. And that's why I threw in the RFQ. Not just breaking order, we want to look at pre-engineered metal buildings too, because again, that could reduce our costs significantly. I was able to tour Cherokee County's jail, very large facility, and it's certainly anything and everything we could use. And it's a BED with hardened on it, well, hardened on the inside. So we're going to be looking at every avenue to make it, you know, affordable, but also what it needs to look like for our area. And that'll be, that'll come with this team. Once the Board decides on a firm they want to go with on the design side, that'll, we'll be working through those, those questions. And there'll be some nails and all that for everybody to agree on and through. The deadline for all the RFQs for their qualifications will be August the 2nd at 5:00 PM. So we'll be looking at getting those by that deadline. And then we'll, we'll seat the committee. And we could do, this is a dead, this is just a milestone. I put in the RFQ. We'll seat the committee to start looking at a short list, which list might be short anyway, on 17 August. We could potentially, depending on how many we get, we can potentially seat earlier if the Board prefers, but that's the schedule from there. Once, again, once we decide on a firm that we want to go with, we can start negotiating the costs from that point. And then if we decide it's way, you know, for whatever reason, it's way too much, you don't like how they talk to us, whatever, we can, we can go to the second one as we grade to go to negotiate. That's the legal way to handle that. There's nothing further on that. Quickly on the number six, the middle school addition I provided, the update, looks like they're, after they got their extension of time, they're ahead of schedule, showing 79%. Again, I would encourage the Board, Ms. Walsh has invited the Board over to take a look. It's a really nice facility. They're doing a good job over there. It's going to be great for our, our sixth graders over at the Hill School. Now, the sticking point, I'm going to move on to the Little Snowbird Bank remediation and Clarion Snagging. We had a phone call with the federal governor. Right now, from my understanding, it's 100% funded by the federal government and the EWP, works in Washington, Texas. We went to them and asked for funding. The call almost went a little sideways with a gentleman by the name of Carl Gilhard, Gilgard, I think is his name. He was seeing pictures, and I emphasize, you need to see it in person. He was looking at pictures and saying, he didn't think, didn't see why this was EWP. And then we all stood back a little bit and said, well, why are we even here? Why did we come this far if it's not EWP? This is, you guys saying this is EWP. So with all that said, we can ask for more funds. And we're, we're going forward with the funding requests for additional funding. But we've also asked this gentleman to come out and do a site visit so we can look and see what the problem is out there. Because it's serious enough. And if you don't believe what we did. And we were getting, we were actually getting, I think the guy named is Jake Stokes from within our SC. He was actually backing us up, but of course, this guy's his boss. So right now, we're looking at Jim, I guess Jim Kylegard is his name. And I've been on the emails. This is the first conversation I've had with him. Submitting the funding, we do it right away. We could take up to two weeks. We, two to three weeks with that. If there is a delay in that, right now, there is no backlog of asking for additional funds. We don't believe that they'll be able to give us recover, obviously, the total cost of what the bid was. The bid came in at $900,000, $997. We negotiated with Adams and we only would be able to cut about $210. And that would take it down to $787 for, for the project. I have state information that I, we have some state money. I have state information that I'm going to follow up with the state to see what, what they can potentially do. But hopefully, meeting with this guy. Right now, we're scheduled at the 29th of July, coming out here and spending the afternoon, which obviously I'd like for the Michigan one or two where I want to go. Worst case scenario will be August the 9th before this Jim Kylegard comes out. So we're, we're kind of a little discouraged after that conversation, but we're going to continue to push forward and try to get all the help we can out there. Any other questions on that? Moving on to the monument. Up on the hill, there were, the bricks were delivered for that monument. I asked for a timeframe for the mason to come over. Couldn't give me a timeframe, but it'll be in between jobs I've come over and about that. Yep. There you go.
I think.
So it's, I'm glad to get it that far.
Yeah. Good one. We're 33.
Yeah.
Down there, all the way around, sort of the front road. Road, road, road. And one bit of brick and then, uh, yeah, a little bit of concrete.
That's, that's great. Trying to get that name completed. There are no questions. That's our reports.
Thank you to the Manager Moreno. All right. We don't think we need to go from you. Hi, it's your Board. This is our year invite, your Board, for June, the year ended June 30, 22. If you look on page 100, close up here in our general fund checking account. And I think we're on a debt management press account, the general fund of 8209, 829. We're a little bit lower than this last time. Last year, we dropped about $409,000. It's all explainable. And you'll see. Part of that is $308,000 that was transferred into our capital project fund. That was our sales tax, which was about $130,000, that was about four, five months' worth of sales tax. And then also budgeted debt return transfers that, that we've been working on our debt plan. And so the balance of that is just, you know, paying out these capital projects and, and doing the money chase and pay chase. I will report that we finally got to $400,000 from USDA on June 30. And as Mr. Coward and his assistants, after much trials, tribulations, and nervous breakdowns, USDA temporarily lost our money. It didn't land in the correct account. And we were not right down to the wire on June 30, getting that money into that account. I was bound and returning. We were going to get that back in, try to close that file on June 30. So I apologize to Mr. Coward, I was a little bit pushy with that, but we got it.
We got her done.
If you look at a lot of your cash balances, you'll see where we stand in our different special funds that we're tracking. Our capital projects fund is now standing a little over $2.9 million. This time last month, we were a little over $2.2 million. Part of that increase is where I've transferred money out of the debt proceeding. We're kind of borrowing from ourselves to cover school project and capital projects. So we're in a personal fund for that. The school capital project fund, that is holding money for net service on this new loan on the new Hill School. That's at $104,000, 355. I'm going to be, my, when I do my final analysis on the sales tax, set aside money for the schools. As you know, they get their little positive sales tax, we take that service out of it. And then one of two things happens, and you pay the version over to the school system, or because we've agreed to fund this match on the Hill School, that money will also go into that account. So we'll see that account increase probably in next month's report. Our American Rescue Plan Act stands at $902,477. We got our tranche, our second tranche of your new room, June of 8/19, $782.50. So that's been shuffled into that account on our general fund. And then I may report that our SCID grant for the Justice Center is standing at $5,744,269. There are good sides. Interest rates increasing. We've got a little over $4,000 in interest on that account this last month. So I'm happy to see that. So I'll So, all total, we saved a little over $7.9 million toward our courthouse and justice center, so I'm really excited to report that. If you'll turn to page two, you'll see we have our final tax collections for the year. The current year real property taxes was 26,573. We got 3671, 39 in prior year taxes, for a total of 30,198.22. And our DMV taxes were still healthy at 55,925. If you'll turn to page four, you will see our total collections for the year. And our tax, our collection for June was 7,156,153.58, which was $561 more than this time last year. So, you know, the tax collection rate went from 97.65 last year to 97.76, so that's an improvement that local government commissions gonna be very pleased with. And you'll also note that our DMV taxes, we were at 17,244. So, looking at all total, our levy for the year was just a little bit over this time last year at 7,182,928. This time last year was 7,180. So, that increase, our tax office did a fine job. We kept our tax base was fairly steady, and our tax trading force was fairly steady. So, that's why we came in basically level for this time last year on tax collections. Page five, you'll see our operations, and I forgot to change my highlight, but you'll see that, as you'll note and you remember from prior years, you'll see our June 30 numbers change every time, because I'll be booking accrue revenue in, receivables, already picked up, sales tax receivable and the VTS receivable, and then, of course, we'll be paying billables that were June bills. And I want to commend my finance staff, because they are, I can hardly get on my, through my process before they're getting paid. So, all POs are staying caught up and current. We did a lot of analysis right at the end of the year to make sure that we only have POs open that are actually true invoices and not any kind of duplication or anything like that. Anyway, revenues collected for the month of June was about 1,589,729. As I said, we got accrued, uh, sales tax and VTS of a little shy, 333,000. Our expenditures for the month were 2,82,608. Was a little bit shy this time last year, but if you'll figure last month, I reported that we were pushing bills on route during May, and then, I've already done the accrual for our salary accruals. Or, we lost, or we showed a deficit of a little over 489,000 for the month of June, a little bit lower than this time last year. And you'll note on page six, that right now, we're showing a deficit for the year of 579,832. Again, that's, we've done a lot of different things. We, we made changes to the pay plan that were planned. We paid for stadium lights, and then we had a lot of these capital projects. That will change, I think, every time as I close out the loan transfers in to replenish the capital. We may, we may show a deficit this year, but we will campaign for that. Page seven, you'll see sales tax is still a little bit lower than last month, but much higher than this time last year. We got 256,000, this time last year, we got 226,000, so 30,000 less. All total, we collected for the fiscal year, 238,000 more than this time last year. That does not include the quarter cent, okay? So, the quarter cent is, is not included in that growth. But we, we, our, our sales tax growth was about 9 percent from this time last year. And I had for this month, or coming up, 25,486.84 in sales tax quarter cent that already transferred into the capital reserve. You'll see, page eight is just my analysis of all the receivables. I always look at where we stood last year, especially in our current year taxes. If you look at the very bottom number before this 473, that's highlighted in yellow, you'll see that we have $160,000 in back taxes from this year. This time last year was 187,000. So, we're, our tax office is truly working hard to keep those numbers healthy. And then, as Mr. Moreno reported, we've got capital projects on page nine. You'll see that these are reported on the numbers for the local projects, the general government projects. You'll notice that we've spent out so far on county match for the middle school, 815.6 in that match, and then, the capital project, the middle school total is 311,000. So, they're about, they're tracking around about 8 percent, which is basically what they're showing on our pay ass. So, with that being said, that's all I have to report. I will say that our office is very busy. We're, we're doing all the year-end reporting. It's required by state and federal agencies, and working on audit again. So, we've rolled from budget to audit. And I'm happy to report that we're staying at work going back based on the projections we made in our timetable to give the information to the auditors. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, comments?
Good job.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have anyone for public comment?
No. I'll check.
Thank you.
My comment about the school system, as I was making, as I was talking about, the program that they have, they'll have at the Grand Canyon School System, and it was taken very well by everyone there who knows. It is basically a seat for the school systems now across the state, and Grand Canyon was one of the highlights for that. And so, Grand Canyon was the sharing group, and I was very honored to hear, you know, Grand Canyon was proud of about the school systems and basically the kids and their needs.
And, okay. Manager Moreno, would you like to take us to the discussion islands?
Yes, ma'am. We'll go down the discussion islands real quick. Releases of $28,374.92 and discoveries of $4,910.95 will be next.
Motion. Is that, thank you, I'll move.
We'll be action on the following. You wanna do these one at a time?
Much so.
Board poll for the new sans device for IT for $3,005.76 and 10 cents. Table and chairs for the lecture board on July the 11th, and the increase of funds to Chris Ferris's budget for the reval for $7,469.
Do you hear a message to approve all three polls? Thank you, it's your state.
Good.
Thank you, all fair.
All right. Next item will be, needs some discussion, it's the NCAA legislative goals.
No other funding may be.
Manager, do you want to adopt the ones the NCAA say are using, or do we want to submit some of our own?
Do you already have a, a review?
I think it's in the package, yes. Yeah, it's on the back. I'll just look at that. I'm going to just go back.
Well, listen to the schools, the, the trade increases in school, that we had to budget extra money to cover the retirement fund because the legislature didn't fund the retirement. Is that correct?
The, um, part of that was their big retirement increase, but the other piece of it was requiring a minimum of, I think, fifteen dollars an hour in wages regardless of whether they were state or local and communities. And so, the school has to pick up, which in turn, the county picks up the additional, which is represents an unfunded mandate.
Exactly what I'm saying. No unfunded mandates. I think that should be all, I think that should be the first priority, first on this issue. Um, Vicki, what, what would be a way to approve, uh, the quarter cent local sales tax? And now, are you restricted on that? That is a problem. You speak to that, I just see that as number three here. So, so some of the counties must be, uh, discussing problems with that, number three.
I'll have to do some research. I'm not quite sure what they mean by that.
So, nothing jumps out at you, so that apparently hasn't been a huge problem for this county, or I'm sure you would have done that.
Well, I don't know what that issue is.
Okay.
When the legislation, the general statute says that you're prohibited for saving what you're going to spend that money on. So, when, with the first time it was up for a vote in, in Grand County, we couldn't get it on about, the second time we couldn't get it out, the first time we didn't advertise what it would be used for. The second time we did, we got the word out and it passed. And, and the reason it didn't the first time, the reason we had to give so much effort the second time, uh, remember the Bar Association Act contributed a thousand dollars just to help us do that, uh, was that it's prohibited by statute, which I think we want to change, say that you can, you can save what you're going to spend that quarter cent sales tax on, instead of just the general tax, you can say we're going to spend it on the quarter cent, or the swing, or whatever it may be. I think that's what they changed. Change that question.
That makes sense because I, now I remember that, you know, we just had to do a lot of advertising and, and handing out and educating the calls. It had to be that general language.
But what, what people saw was T-A-X.
Yes.
And nothing further.
Yes.
Right.
And so, we had to really get out front of it to help the public understand that this money would go toward that Justice Center and help improve, uh, the reality.
And actually, that was a fair response, the way it was advertised initially. What's that, you board? Legislative, like they are, if you have a doubt, you want to change your plan, you have to get, like, to supply for the base, but.
I don't know. I don't have another, even all day off.
Um, Manager Maria, Clark Christie, you've been doing this a long time, and, um, it's hard. If you don't have any comments on these, or insights, what would I want to do?
Sort of, sort of the same feeling as Keith, but I think, I mean, it's a good place to start, I think, with the end of the day.
I think, and I think, Commissioner Ward, you stated this on number five, it should be no unfunded mandates, period. You know, not just, you know, diverting revenues, one, one thing, but pushing down expense that the state can bear, uh, because they got huge surpluses, is, is, in my opinion, not acceptable. But I think I voiced that pretty strongly, but.
Yeah, I, I would certainly agree with just having the mortgage eliminate, uh, unfulfilled mandates, you can't erase. The director in race, which is what we're seeing.
I can just do it for counties that's under camp load and block flights.
I didn't have one. Which is those? Okay.
Whenever we, we did the sales tax and they fixed it where it wasn't on a sale, or it was now on a sale, right? We, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, that's worse, I guess.
Sure was, it sure, it took money out of the pockets of the people here who were spending the money in surrounding counties, certainly. It, it was very hurtful to our budget.
With this already having the quarter cent sales tax, that may be said that you won't just put in there instead of the quarter cent, is to say again, I mean, it can never stop being said that we don't like it.
Yeah, let's go back to whatever year, the four billion years prior to, uh, I don't remember what year it was, they changed that, two thousand three, two thousand four, and they changed that distribution method. And then, they, they, they went back and revisited that sometime, but they still don't have the one they were using in two thousand or whatever.
Yeah.
I thought that was much more fair. Got a first capital distribution on it. Yeah. Yeah, there's no telling how many things the citizens of Grand County have built in Charity County.
I think that's it.
Helping build the big things is good, we're there right now.
Yeah. Okay, um, on number five, if you, um, when you said the citizens changed the purpose to eliminate, uh, unfulfilled mandates, or if you can, is there any stronger language than that? It's legal.
Nuke, I mean, unfunded mandates.
What?
Nuke.
Keep explaining legal, but get it as strong as you can. And I would like to see that number one. You all agree? Ethan, no. Agree to have the number one, yes?
Okay.
Yes, I would say. Okay. I'll go with that.
All right. So, you guys are good with that discussion? We'll move on to, no action, but just bring it back up again, the Advent Health Community meeting here in this room on the 25th at 6:00 P.M. And it's supposed to last to eight, but it could, it could be done sooner than that. Representative Gillespie again will be attending that. And the Southwestern Commission Annual Dinner, Monday, 25th at 5:30 P.M., and that's in Silla. That'll be at the restaurant, Baby's in Silla. I've never been there. And then.
Please don't risk it.
Yeah, please, RSVD.
It's here for you. Yeah. Read, read that, is it sort of farm or?
The vineyards at Baby's Creek.
Yeah.
Tian, Bager, Gager Lane.
Outdoor, it's beautiful, like.
Yeah. I've never been there, but I've RSVD'd, I'm in a couple of Southwestern Commission boards, so, unless the board would rather me attend that Advent Health, I plan to go to that there.
I have to, and I do not know about this Advent Health. Um, and I've asked, we have a peek, maybe, already? Okay. Okay, if, um, if possible.
Okay, I'm there for all day. Does anybody want to talk to our representative about?
Anything, that's right. Okay.
All right. Is there any new or old business?
I don't have any. Either, do, do we need to go beyond these legislative bills?
Probably. You want me to get them together and then send them to you by email, and you can let me know what you want changed or what you don't?
Well, I think the only thing that we discussed changing was number five, moving number five to number one.
Okay.
And, um, changing the purpose to make exactly what it says.
And leaving the exact purpose of the rest, that's fine.
And then, and then put that with it to number one. Do I hear a motion to take that action, and Kim will do that, and then we're pending re-tape of those?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? You have a second? I'll move. Newer old business, do we have either?
There's no.
Okay, um, we all need a motion for a closed session. GS 143318, eleven A, 1356, privilege of confidential information. Attorney-client privilege, personnel and contracts with a two-minute break. Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
May I have a second, please? I'll move. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? I'll say, I'll move.